City Council Agenda for the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the first, two thousand twenty-three, six o'clock. I invite everybody to buy your insight work for our voters. If you have any call to make for this day, or if you probably need blessings, you're done for us. Give us, and it's time to be able to come together, or to work for the citizens of North and Door. We ask that you give us the leadership and the mindset for everything that we say. To honor and glorify you and be the best for the city of all the citizens of North. We love you, thank you. Say your son, she is a doctor, she is a name operator. Thank you. You stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to God, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the objective justice for all.
Thank you. Do you have a motion for approval of minutes for the special meeting on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three?
May I motion that we approve the minutes for special meeting on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll say. Mr. Backus. Mr. Reed. Mr. Sager. Mr. Carey, thank you. Do you have approval of, a motion for approval of minutes for the regular meeting on July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our special meeting on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have to do it separately?
July.
Oh, Ju-, well, this said June on mine.
We just did that.
And, I mean, I said June thirtieth, and then, do we do it separately?
Yeah, we just did the June.
They said the first one.
So now, I'm, I'm still saying, it says June thirtieth, that one we're talking about, right?
They've already, they've already did June thirtieth, they're on July eleventh now.
Okay. So, we're making a, a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting on July the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll say. Mr. Backus. Okay, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Sager. Mr. Carey, thank you. Do you have a, a motion for approval of meeting agenda for tonight for the regular meeting on August the first, two thousand twenty-three?
I'll motion to approve the, uh, meeting agenda for regular meeting on August first, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Nelson. Mr. Backus. Mr. Sager. Mr. Carey, thank you. Our citizens wishing to speak, we've got six, so make sure you limit it to five minutes, four or less, we'd really appreciate it. It's Rajon Williams. I'm Jamie Harris.
I'm fine, thank you.
Can you speak?
I'm good.
Henry McMillan.
I'll come up here.
Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone. I'm here, I'm speaking in behalf of my mother, Shirley McMillan. I have a few issues. One, the first issue that I have is, my mother, um, she does a lot of cleanup in the yard, stuff like that. And, the last two times my mom has been calling the street, the sanitation department or whatever, she has been getting met with attitude and a lot of confrontation, for no reason. She's been getting different information. She's called about some mattresses being picked up on the side of the road. And, the lady, I don't know, I can call her name, it's Kelly or whatever, I don't know her last name. She has told my mom that they, they don't do that, they don't pick up the trash anymore, or they don't pick up, uh, the mattresses anymore. So, my mother had to get, had to get somebody, pay somebody to go pick up, take the mattresses off. Because Ms. Kelly told her that y'all, the city doesn't pick them up anymore. And so last week, my mom had a renovation of her house. She got some yard debris and some old furniture, that's on the side of the road, my mom called. And again, she was met with attitude, she was met with confrontation, arguing for nothing. She's basically telling my mom one thing, and we sitting there looking at the trash on the side of the road, saying that, they're, they're not, they're not gonna come pick it up, and we gonna get fined for, for that. And, still to this day, it's still sitting out on the side of the road. I mean, I understand that the trucks are down or whatever, but the problem I'm having is every time my momma called to talk to this lady, Kelly or whoever her name is, she always give us bad information, or give us bad attitude. It's never to help us, it's always to argue with us. And I'm here today to complain about that. I'm also here, there are a couple vacant lots behind us, behind my mom's house. Grass is rolled up, um, nothing gets done about it. Side of the road, on the road that we stay on, the roads are, are rolled up, nothing gets done about it. My mom called up Eric Ken to find out what she could do about it. She's met with attitude, confrontation. It's very disheartening and aggravating when we living in a city for as long as we've been living in, but it seems like no one wants to help us, they rather, they rather argue with us than getting things done for the city. And, another thing I want to complain about, water bill. Now, I don't know if I can get any, I don't, I'm not looking to get anything done about it, but I just got the question is, why is the water bill getting so high? I mean, my water bill signed in my light bill. And, and I don't understand why. I, I don't see nothing else getting done in the city, other than drainage system and stuff that been supposed to been acting up for the last fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. But now all of a sudden, the water bill is skyrocketing. Don't understand that. And, for the most part, and another thing, is this new water park, is that gonna be another reason for our water bill to go up even more? I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking because our water bills been going up for a reason, I don't know why. And it's still going up. And, those are really my complaints.
If you might give me your number, I'll be glad to call you.
Okay.
What's your number?
Eight four three, six two four, six seven seven eight.
Could you give me the street with the vacant lots?
We stay on Calhoun Street, and I think the street beside it is Fleming. I think that's the street.
I'll, I'll give you a call afterwards, I was.
My question would be to you is.
Are we gonna quit tonight, we're just gonna call, you wanna talk with the math, we're just, we'd be glad to talk with you afterwards.
My question to you is.
This, Ms., uh.
The, the problem that you're having with.
Ms. Backus.
I'm gonna ask my question now.
This basket, we're not asking.
My question to you is. I want to understand your question.
Ms. Backus, I ask.
I want to understand your question.
Ms. Backus, I ask that we don't have comments right now.
I want to understand your question.
Number, we got a number, you can speak.
No, I'm gonna ask him right now his question. He made a question, I want to understand the question.
We are not here for question and answer.
On your street.
Ms. Backus.
On your street.
Please do not continue, okay?
On your street.
Ms. Backus, please do not continue, I ask for comments. This is comments only, we have six people to listen to tonight, we can talk with them afterwards, that's all I simply ask.
He just don't want you to talk about Kelly in public, that's, because I remember that question about the sanitation department. That's the point I want to ask.
Okay, if you would like to ask, ask him that.
Uh, it's not a private conversation, it's coming to me.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, I apologize, okay?
They trying to hide what's going on, that's what they want you to know.
Well, she's a brown.
They know, he trying to hide it.
She's a brown.
They trying to hide it.
Georgia Ross.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Georgia Ross, retired military, moved back home, and wanted to be here, as mayor, councilpeople. I'm here on the same old thing I came doing pandemic. And the gentleman alluded to the water bill. But instead, I'm here for the seniors of Darlington. We have worked all of our lives. We moved back home, and we stayed home to enjoy the fruits of our labor. However, someone is trying to take it away from us. Right now, the water bill, so, as he's saying, that's what I'm back here on. Young lady called me, she said I can pay the water bill, not a problem, two hundred and two dollars, she live in a house alone. Everything went up, the water, the sanitation, uh, drainage fee. Why is everything being raised when it's just the water? She admits to her water being left on, and not quite sure how long it was on. So she admits to the water, but her question was, why did sanitation go up? Why did storm fees go up, sewer go up? Why are we raising prices on everything when it was just the water that overran? That's a good question for me also, and other seniors. I don't just get called by one person. No, I'm not an officer, but I'm a well-known person in Darlington, okay? Now, like I said, we have a water fountain down on Pearl Street that runs twenty-four seven. I would assume we were paying that water bill.
And the council did not authorize.
We are paying that water bill, twenty-four seven, the water don't go off. We're getting ready to set up a waterslide, water park, or whatever you wanna call it, more added to your water bill. Who cares? Not the ones of us that are paying it, the ones of us that tell them this, that we're gonna pay it. You add another fifty dollars on a person water bill, that's, if it's not paid by the fifteenth of the month, you call that a cutoff fee. If the water wasn't cut off, why are you asking them for another fifteen, not fifty dollars plus a percentage? I don't understand the way, to me, it seems like somebody trying to get something that they don't need to have, or somebody's trying to take something from somebody, that's the way it seems to me. I'm not a problem, I can pay it, but I don't wanna pay it, I'm just like the other ten or fifteen seniors that calls me on the phone. I'm seventy-six years old, why should I continue to be doing this? Some of them are older than me. It is not right, you all, it is not right. Somebody needs to stop now, or yesterday. You don't care, say it, how many of you live in the city limit, don't answer my question. Do all of y'all live in the city limit where you're paying these bills, probably no. But like I said, we worked, we moved back home. We would love to enjoy the fruits of our labor, we were born and raised here. Why can't we come back home and enjoy it? We gotta always look out for water bill, and making so bad, the water bill came last week to be paid this month. That's the first time the water bill in that, in that area. So much of stuff is being added on too. Two dollars here, two dollars there, that's a lot of money to some people. That's a lot of money to some people. Those focuses that water that you're cutting off, fifty dollars, even if they don't cut it off from the fifteen, plus another percentage, come on, guys, let's get real. Let's get real, let's not act like them folks is in Washington, call, we're not in Washington. We right here in little old Darlington. My son called me from Tennessee, he said, Ma, y'all getting the waterslide, and right now you having a water problem. That'd be Tennessee, Nashville and Clarksville, Tennessee. My son called me from New York, Ma, what going on? You know, something wrong with these pictures.
He being ripped off.
What is going on? I call it shame, 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 thank you for listening.
Ms. Ross, do you have a number I can talk with you afterwards?
Excuse me?
Do you have a number I can call you, talk with you?
Sir, you and I spoke before, one-on-one.
I do.
We spoke one time, one-on-one. And, but what you said to me, you can say it to all the people.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
Thank you too.
Ms. Bailey.
A cease and desist notice?
All right, thank you, Ms. Bailey. Uh, let's see, is Ernestine live?
So the city managers are sending false information that you're saying with your name on it? And now we getting a cease and desist notice?
Sorry to interrupt, but as we know, it says very clearly in number five, residents wishing to appear before council, that neither personal attacks nor disorder of behavior are permitted, that is for council and for the citizens.
Who's attacking somebody?
Please respect it.
Who's attacking somebody?
Excuse me, Ms. Live, who's Ms. Live?
It don't matter attacking nobody, I'm asking her a question.
And it's.
Who's attacking somebody? It said the city manager, the name, that's what it says in here. And he's getting a cease and desist notice.
Feel in Ms. Live's speak, I appreciate it.
That's what it says. I'm not gonna attack anybody, I'm just saying what the letter say. Good job, Giselle.
My name is Ernestine Ly, I'm here again about the water bill. And like you say, about the senior citizen, my mother is a senior citizen. She lives by herself, her bill is over a hundred dollars. Like you say, my mother's eighty-something years old, going on ninety. She's not using numbers water, but her bill is over a hundred dollars for one person. She's not only, the only senior citizens, and that's why I keep saying, this isn't just about us, it's about everybody. The senior citizens are getting hurt a lot, like you said, we have worked all our lives. I came back home, this is where I was, I grew up and was raised. And here it is, coming back now, thinking I'm gonna get some kind of enjoyment out of life. And it's like, everything is going up, I pay more here than I did in the city. And it, it just not adding up for water, for the sewers, the, um, on, on, um, the other day, the trash didn't pick up at my house. But yet I'm still getting charged this bill. They didn't pick up, there was no pickup at all. When there's no pickup, I don't see where we get a credit on my bill that says, okay, we didn't pick up, we should be get a credit here. But there's no, and instead, it keeps going up more, and that's not right. Like you said, now we getting the bill, I just paid the bill on seven six, before the month's out, I got a bill on seven twenty-six, what a new bill. Something's not right with this. Something is definitely wrong, and it need to be, something has to be done, it has to stop. I'm just like, it's just too much. And, are they actually doing, are meter readings for the water? Are they, on the meter reading I actually seen was in front of me, I actually saw the guy come out here personally and read the meters. That's the only time I, where I live at, nobody reads anything, that meter hasn't been moved at all. The guy did the other day because my water was dark. And he told me, because I'm on the end of the street, um, the way the line is, it picks up the dirt. So he had me to run my water, actually run the water from out the house, and gonna tell me to turn my, um, water on the end of the house, which is, dirty stuff is gonna come into my house. I ran it for a while, then I'm like, oh no, this is not right, this is not the way I'm supposed to be doing this. Not when everything keeps going up, there's no reason that I should be running water for dirty water to come inside of my house. And on the outside, outside fine, but on the inside, in my tub, for me to run the tub, you know, to clear the water, never had to do that before. Usually they go to the, uh, what do you call it, and they run it, and they flood it out. But this time, he was telling me to actually run it in my house.
The fire hydrant?
The fire hydrant, they usually do that, and they flood it out, they'll go and flood the system out. But this time, he just told me to run it in my house until it clears up. That ain't the way you're supposed to do this. Another thing I have, you keep telling me about the oil mill, the oil mill, you keep saying it's not the city, y'all not over it. But the oil mill, and the oil, they, that, you just have to ride through there, you see all the, um, grass and stuff is all grown up. There don't seem to be a problem with that, all the grass, we already got snakes over there, got snakes real bad over there. There's no cleanup, they doing exactly what they wanna do. I called, um, Florence about the smell, because that odor some days, you can't even sit outside because of the odor. Nothing's changed on that, when I come, you keep saying, city's not responsible, but the city is responsible for that. If you can find the rest of everybody else, then you can definitely find the oil mill. Or they could be removed out in the country to somebody else's house, so that they can go through this. A lot of senior citizens in front of me that lives in that building are wearing, um, what do you call it, masks, uh, oxygen. Yes, a lot of them, and since I've been there, a lot of them have passed, and I know they passed because, you know, whatever. But still, a lot of them were around there with oxygen masks that they're wearing. Like I said, we live a certain time, you live a certain age, you wanna enjoy the rest of your life. You don't wanna see what you gotta go through just constantly. And if we don't stand up and stick out for each other around here, which is what we all supposed to be doing, but that's not working out that way. And also, on my street, right at the corner, they keep putting these little bit of, uh, what do you call it, tar to cover the hole, the hole is still there. That's why I say, it's gotta be fair around the hole.
What street is it now?
That street is Brockton Street, Brockton, and right in front of the mill, there's a spot, there's a hole, they put it, they fill it in a little bit. But soon as you turn, it does the same thing, the hole is still sinking back in.
Do you have a number I can call you afterwards?
You said you called Florence where?
Florence at D X.
Okay.
Do you have a number I can call you afterwards?
No, I'm like, I'm like, whatever we need to be said, need to be said, so everybody can be a part of it.
And not in secret.
If you're willing to talk, if anybody's trying to get.
Tell you one thing, and tell somebody else something.
All right, thank you.
All right, this. Mayor Bullard.
Yes, ma'am.
Since there was so many questions about the bill, and that, do we have any explanation about it being set up?
Glad to sit and talk with them outside of council, or in front of everybody, I just, I don't wanna, I'm not asking anybody in the back room, but, you know, the same thing on Facebook, a lot of people wanna get on Facebook and talk, and then they'll call you back and try to discuss things, person to person. So, but I'm more than, look at your bill, help you with your bill, um, see what, if there's an issue, what's going on, but, you know.
But, but not, but, not the individual bill, just why we may have been getting, why it may have been that way at all.
A lot of the information that's brought up tonight is not correct, and I'd be more than glad to clarify once it's not correct, we'll do that at later time. All right, old business, uh, second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, parking times and places, Mrs. Jones.
Good evening, mayor and council.
They need an explanation.
Just quickly, just quickly, tell them. Coming before y'all for the second reading, um, to change the parking places and times around the square, um, different marked areas where it's currently, um, you can't park, um, in the square, in the words, has two-hour parking from nine to five, um, Monday through Friday, and we wanna change that. Uh, because we have more businesses that, um, are open longer, um, so that people can patron those businesses, we wanna change the, those hours from, um, nine to ten. So this is just the second reading.
This, uh, this doesn't concern anything, like, for the, the time, you know, like some families have fifteen-minute spots, and things like that.
No, those, it, well, it, it directly impacts those in that those are the spots specifically that are Monday through Friday from nine to five currently. So, it will, it will be, um, Monday through Friday from nine to ten, those, um, two-hour, fifteen-minute parking places will, um, govern over those.
You know, I've had a few people bring up attention for us not having enough time, enough spots, like some handicapped people, or whatever, they're getting their hair done, or whatever, whatever, how long? How long are they allowed to park on the square?
Uh, right now, two hours. Except for the fifteen-minute spots.
But this, this ordinance is just changing it to where it's.
Nine to five, to, to nine to ten.
I'll motion to approve the second reading ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash zero eight, parking times and places.
I'll second. Mr. Reed. Mr. Sager, are you good, the motion's carried, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sager. All right, you guys, uh, council manager for, you're in hold, responsibility in this bill, um, Mr. Barrett, thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening, mayor and council, uh, it's great to be here, it's good to see a number of you, um, over the past week in, in Greenville for, uh, our annual meeting. Just some brief comments about, uh, the form of government and our civility initiative, um, that, that y'all have adopted, uh, thank you. Um, some items of note, uh, for you, um, our regional advocacy meetings are coming up. The closest for you in-person meeting is Hartsford, that's September the twenty-eighth, I put a card out for you, so we'd love for you to join us. Um, there's a virtual meeting this year, so if you can't attend, uh, any of the meetings in person, there's a virtual meeting on October the eighteenth. Also, would, uh, encourage you to apply for the Hometown Economic Development Grant, it's due the twenty-ninth of September, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I believe the match for your, it's based, the match is based on population, I believe yours is ten percent, which would be twenty-five hundred. But happy to assist in any way that I can.
And which grant is this?
It's the Hometown Economic Development Grant. Um, we, we see communities using it for their downtown, uh, maybe a, a high-activity park, uh, facade improvements, signage. Uh, we have seen communities use it for removal of light along economic corridors, so, ha- happy to help in any, any way that I can. Um, again, going quickly, uh, your role, and, and we talked about this, as, as y'all know, um, I'm a former city manager. Um, when you, when you run for council, it's, it's about you, and your challenge is, is how do we collectively act, uh, as a team? Um, and it's, and it's learning about trusting one another, learning about each other, uh, learning that you have strengths and weaknesses, that you're, you're human. And, um, so those councils that are able to, to work together, uh, to build that trust and teamwork are, are most effective. And so, uh, and y'all know these things, uh, the, the success of the meeting starts with preparation, how much you prepare. Um, and that means, you know, meeting with your city manager, possibly asking questions of your city attorney. There should be no surprises in a meeting, we, we want our meetings to run, uh, your meetings to run as efficiently and effectively as possible. We're gonna talk about the form of government, as, as you know, you are operating under the manager form of government. And we, we regularly use the term stay in your lane, and, and that means that, that you understand your role, and I'll, I'll cover that, um, some more. But, again, recap, y'all know that there are three forms of government in our state, the mayor, council, the council, and the manager. All three forms are effective and used across, uh, our, our state, we have challenges with all three. So, you know, the, the form of government, I always tell folks, is, is not the answer, it's, it's getting the team, uh, to work together when, when there are challenges. But, again, the manager form specifically, there are now thirty-four, which are all, um, changing to the manager form, uh, last year, uh, that began this July. Um, it's a, a structure of four, six, or seven council members, uh, you, you have six council members and then the mayor. This, this form, while the least used in our state, is the most used nationwide. Uh, it was originally set up in the progressive era to try to make, uh, government, local government act like a business, and, and, and each of you know, that's, that's hard. Uh, but, but that was the intent, to have the, the government operate more like a business. Uh, in, in the, this form, the council collectively hire a, a manager, um, and council, uh, all of the staff, except for the attorney and the judge, you all collectively appoint those, all the other staff are appointed, selected, uh, by the manager following policies that are, that are adopted, uh, by you. By state law, it is, it is the responsibility of council to not interfere, not interfere with that day-to-day operation. Now, that's, that's easier said than done, I, I've been there, certainly, no manager wants to tell, uh, his council, you know, don't pick up phone and call staff. I mean, we, we want to be open, y'all are a small town, but know that, um, you know, this is what I did when I was a manager. I told the staff, hey, if you get a call from a council member, that's great, the first call after that should be to the manager saying, I just spoke, just wanted you to know. Again, it's, it's about teamwork. The same thing with the manager, he's got to treat each of you collectively the same, so if one of you asks for something, all seven of you are gonna get it. Um, so, you know, we, we, again, building that team, that trust, uh, is, is, is critical. Again, your powers, so collectively, the council, the mayor. Um, a- again, your powers, so collectively, the council, the mayor and council, y'all are, are, y'all set policy. You give, set the policy and give it to your manager, uh, to implement. You, you appoint a mayor pro temp, uh, and as I've said, you appoint the judge and the attorney. Um, and if necessary, can appoint an, an acting manager. Um, when, when I was in Greenwood, the law allows the manager to basically, uh, put a letter in the file that says, in, in my, uh, absence, this individual on staff acts as the manager. But council can meet if, if there's an absence and then appoint their own person, um, on staff to, to act, um, as necessary with the absence. Um, a- again, uh, you collectively are to adopt a, a balanced budget, you're to have an annual audit. Um, you have to issue debt, uh, you appoint boards, your planning commission, board zoning deals. Certainly, the, the manager is going to provide you with recommendations of, of names, but it is your responsibility to appoint those. Uh, you establish and investigate, uh, departments, and I, and I should say there to clarify, um, it says council investigates, all these things say, say council. Realize that's collective. So we really want to be careful, we, we don't want to have one or two members out there investigating. That, when we talk about staying in your lane and following your roles, that's, that's what I mean. If, if council wanted to investigate, it would have to take a vote to investigate, so. And, and I've seen that, um, in my, in my career as a manager, uh, you know, I had a, a council member, start what he, he did, he sees it as an investigation, but that's, that's kind of what he was doing. And, and so it, 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 it creates, uh, challenges on the team when those kind of things happen, when, when things occur and other members don't know about them. So those are the things that we want to try to do to, to build trust, uh, and to be effective. The mayor, a- again, presides at the, the meeting, uh, but that's by, uh, tradition, not, not by statute. Uh, the mayor can call special meetings, the mayor acts just like every other member of council. Um, uh, I get that call regularly, well, the mayor can only vote in case of a tie. No, the mayor's vote counts just as much as everybody else. The mayor can actually, uh, make a motion, second motion, but as the mayor knows, it, it's a challenge. He or she is kind of like the, the captain of the ship and trying to not take sides. You try to just want to keep that ship, uh, moving forward. And so, um, anyway, and then the mayor can, as necessary, appoint a, a temporary judge. Any questions on the reminders of forms of government? And then our civility campaign, we're now in our second year. Um, the, the, our board, uh, the municipal association's board adopted, uh, a civility campaign with the goal of, uh, e- encouraging, um, all of us to, to act collectively, uh, cooperative, um, agreeing that, you know, it's okay to disagree, but we're going to do it, uh, respectfully. Um, uh, for those of you that attended the annual meeting in Greenville, we had a, a, a great, I think, keynote from, uh, Chris Singleton. Um, and he talked about, you know, loving one another and, uh, even those that may not look like us or come from, came from a, a different upbringing or have different religious beliefs, but we all learn to, to, to find a way to, to work together. And y'all have adopted that pledge and, um, you, you know, um, a- again, um, I, I regularly use this quote from, from Vince Lombardi, uh, praise in public, criticize in private. So when we need to talk about things that are difficult, we want to have those conversations one-on-one, uh, typically behind, behind closed doors, that's the most effective. Um, in a, in an open session, you know, uh, you, you really don't want to use a negative tone. You want, you want to show cooperative, you, you don't want to call out your staff, uh, or one another. And, and sometimes maybe they deserve it, I, I've been there. But at the same time, by calling out or chastising staff publicly, you're, you're undermining their ability to get stuff done. So a- again, uh, uh, praise in public, criticize in private.
Question.
Sure.
And this is speaking on behalf of citizens who we get phone calls from and employees who we get phone calls from. You've got employees in this city, and I'm speaking specifically Dallas, and I'm not talking about no other town, specifically in this city, who feel like they're being mistreated, uh, being attacked, and they'll want to bring it to council. They've tried to discuss it with the city manager, getting nowhere. What is that employee's position as far as they want to bring it and have a conversation with council?
You know, i- i- in my experience, if y'all won't be to respond, um, I, I would not recommend, um, council in the manager form taking all that. As soon as you open the door, uh, to allow employees to come meet with you, whether that's executive session or however, and, and discuss matters, you're, you're going to end up having to deal with every single one of those issues. And that's what you've hired a manager to do, and by state law, that is what they are responsible to do, to carry those things out. So what you want to do is to meet in, in executive session with your manager possibly, to discuss those personnel matters, uh, maybe legal matters, and have he or she, uh, to carry out, um, the, that policy. Uh, a- again, I would not recommend, uh.
You quit, oh, oh, back up, back up, you missed the point. If the, if the, if the employer yourself is having an issue with the city manager, try to discuss it with the city manager and getting nowhere. And their next step would be to go to council, that's what I'm asking you, or go legal. But I'm asking you, you don't suggest, if they're not getting anywhere with the city manager or getting this problem solved, you don't suggest that the next matter, next step for that, those employees is to come to council or go legal?
A- a- again, um.
Because the city manager's the problem.
You are going to, well, that, that is for council, that's for council to discuss.
That's what I'm asking you, that's what I'm asking you.
That's for council to discuss.
Right, that's what I'm asking you.
But not, I would not recommend having employees, um, come to you one-on-one. In my twenty years in the form, that form of government, we, we never.
But I mean, come to council and a meeting, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking you.
Would I recommend individual employees coming to council?
If they got a grievance, they went to grievance, can't get the grievance, just want to try to get understanding for me.
No, I would not recommend that.
So what do you suggest they do then?
A- again, they have to work with the manager, that's, that's the form of government.
You're not getting anywhere, uh, it's not going to go, it's not going anywhere. They, they, they done all that, it's going nowhere. In a few minutes, the city gonna blow up, it's going nowhere.
So, so again, um, just, just in closing, um, we've already talked about preparation is, is very important. Um, follow your rules of order, um, you know, if, if things get challenging, um, sometimes you have to take a recess. Uh, we see that, and, um, you know, um, trying to get to, to know each other one-on-one as much as you can, um, uh, encourage that. You know, one of my council members, I, sometimes we've go to his house and sit in his front porch swinging with him, and that was the best opportunity that I had to, to try to interact with him and learn from him and listen to him. So just the more you can do that to build that trust relationship, um, amongst.
You mean, when you was the city manager, which is.
Correct, yes.
When you was the city manager.
Uh, Charlie. I mean, I mean, it's just being very real, being very, very real as to what we have to deal with. I can go to the, Big Louis, go across the street, and I meet people that come, just like to come here. Because I am a councilwoman elected from this area, and they feel like they can come to me with whatever issue it is. And that's where sometimes we do have a problem. Because besides them being the employees, uh, or city employee, they're also of, just a residence of my area.
True.
And so I don't want, because they, of their employment, something from being able to talk to the person they voted for to be here. So that is an issue, and I'm just saying, I always listen, and we do want to know when it comes to, because as you see, it is a problem here, and we want to follow the rules, we don't want all of the cleral. We signed this ability because that's how we'd want it to happen. So we really be looking for clear way, all ways that we can handle that because, uh, I may walk out of here and somebody still called, I got a phone call. And, and the way that you're responding is like, I can't answer, I'd have to come back. And we need to be able to, to have a clear, transparent, and just, uh, I mean, the right kind of information to, not just to put them on. So that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. I would, I, I think meeting with constituents, meeting, um, and, and learning from each other, having those conversations is, is effective. Um, uh, you, you, you just, um, in the form of government, uh, that you operate under.
Yes.
The city manager form, um, really those employees report, uh, to the manager.
Sure. And I've done, I mean, whatever, but we are seriously and really earnestly trying to, uh, establish some way to deal with the, the situation that we do have in this city.
I mean, a perfect example is the situation that we got, and, and you might have a little thought on this. I've gotten so many phone calls, so many people stop for me in the street talking about that street sanitation department. And like this young man here just said, he's only one out of fifty people that I've heard from, uh, conversations, even I've called the street sanitation department and get the same kind of attitude, even curse words. But she's somehow protected by our city manager. God only knows why, because she done done some stuff. But why is she so protected? Maybe you know. She's protected, everybody else in the city can get fired, but she's protected. Nobody should be able to put their hands on another employee. Nobody should be able to throw a cap on another employee. And it's okay because he's a black bear. Nobody should be able to do that. Nobody should be that protected. Tell me something wrong with this picture. Nobody should be able to do that. And nothing is ever done about it? No, uh-uh. You get fired from one department, get hired the next day on a couple of days in another department, and now you protected? Huh? Y'all think about that, why is she so protected?
Any additional questions for the government?
Y'all think about that, why she so protected by our city manager?
Good, thank you, Mr. Seager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, when I made this, I did not realize this agenda was going to be on vacation this week, so. If you'll remember, in the budget, we put sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, to pay Cross Street and to pay Roanoke Drive. Uh, we put out for bid, we received two. One is from Evans Pavement, Pavement Services. And the other is from Industrial Paving. Out of the two, Evans Pavement Services had the lower bid at sixty-five thousand dollars. The other was at seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars. So we're bringing these to you for the staff accreditation of awarding the bid at Evans Pavement Services. I believe this is a total of, uh, nineteen roads that the city has paved. Make seventeen for, and make two more that we paid, we own, I think my numbers are correct, forty-three roads. We'd be, this will have been nineteen of the forty-three roads that we own. A lot of them are other roads, state roads that are working on getting paved also. You know, a motion to, uh, approve the bid for, which one?
I'd like to motion, I'd like to motion to approve Evans Paving Services to pave Roanoke and Cross Street for a total of sixty-five thousand dollars.
I think.
Mr. Seager? Mr. Seager, true. All right, motion's carried, thank you. Roanoke, and people on, uh, Cross Street will be on the, we're seeing that one. All right, uh, new business, D H E C, two thousand twenty-four, drinking water annual fee?
Yes, sir, D H E C requires us to pay a, an annual bill to them. It's above my signature, authority, my signing authority, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, we, we have to pay this, so there's no negotiation. Uh, but I wanted to bring it to you so that you could follow it, so that I could pay it since it's over my signing authority.
I'd like to motion, I'd like to motion to approve the payment of D H E C two, twenty twenty-four drinking water annual fee for sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars.
I'll second, if I have to. Mr. Seager? Mr. Seager, I agree, motion's carried, thank you. All right, Department Spotlight, uh, Jordan, City Police Department, Chief Davis.
Mayor, City Manager, Quinton. Um, y'all, I brought a few officers from the police department, uh, any that were available. Um, we did have some that could not make it for different reasons, various reasons. Um, and I'm asking to step up and introduce yourself, just a little brief. Who am I and what I do here at the police department for the city?
Come on up.
He's the. He's a council member and the mayor's mayor, I'm Officer Shane Kaiser, and I've been at the department for just about six years now. I'm a sergeant, make me supervisor of one of the shifts.
Even I'm a citizen, Martin, been here sixteen years, um, all my career been here, enjoy the department, I enjoy working here. Trying to make the city a better place one person at a time. Um, there's going to be some disagreements, but we need to come together and stay together the best we can. Um, we're one team, this department as a whole. Um, my personal preference, I like to do is build community relations with the community, um, in the police department. Um, there's a little gap in between that, and I like, I like to build, uh, especially in, um, certain progress neighborhoods, even though that law enforcement has their back just they would, uh, folks living in the country. We're here, all right? Yes, if anything, we are here, uh, you know, the patrol lieutenant commander, one of two. And Lord willing, I retire or happy.
Good evening, how are y'all? I'm Miss Condon. I have been with the department for about a year, I'll be mayor September. I have been at the academy, it'll be seven months this month, so I am the newest officer in the patrol department. Um, I came from Columbia, not much about me, just trying to learn the work, learn the role, that's about it.
Tell me your name again.
Area Washington.
Were you related to this, were you related to Kevin Washington?
No, man, no relation.
No?
I'm Sergeant Keith Coffin, um, I've been with Darlington about fifteen years now, and I do plan on retiring from here because I like the family environment. Um, I am a sergeant over all S R O's of, of Darlington, and I work at Darlington High School. I'm just there to, you know, help the kids out, and, because it starts from there. Where our community get better, we got to start with there, all right?
So how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Did you receive an award?
I did. I got an award for saving a lot of kids' life at Darlington High School.
Oh, wow.
Um, and I got another one, I got a, the S R O of the year award, um, another award, so.
Good evening, I'm Levonda Green, I'm from Darlington. I've been at the Darlington City Police Department for twenty-eight years.
Twenty-eight.
Started in nineteen ninety-five under Chief Roy Williams. And I love what I do, I love helping people, I'm administrative assistant, and I enjoy the people that I work with.
We enjoy you too, Ron.
You just said I'm about to retire, huh?
She's not allowed to go on.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Lieutenant John Gutierrez, um, I've been with the police department since two thousand fifteen. department since two thousand fifteen. I've been policing since nineteen ninety-one. I'm originally from New York, and I've policed with them for twenty years. Um, we try to do a lot of good work here to keep everybody safe. Um, that's everybody. And, um, again, I hope that we can just continue to do that, and I'm thankful to serve y'all.
Good evening. I'm Officer Parker. Uh, I'm on street patrol. Been there for about three years. Love doing my job. Hope to stay here and keep up the good work. Three years here. And Inspector Hayes in the back, out late and setting up, but he definitely needs to be ready.
While he's coming up, y'all, I'll also remind y'all that, uh, next Tuesday is National Night Out for us, and, uh, we invite all of y'all, please come join us.
What are the hours? Six to eight?
Are you on the job now?
Everybody. Tony Hayes, Inspector here with the Darlington City Police Department, been in law enforcement for about fifteen years now, and I am in investigations in our K-9 unit.
And your K-9 dog is?
Luke.
Luke.
And he also, uh, I always tell him that if somebody rolls through a stop sign, they should stop.
Yeah.
And it's a good idea that somebody stops somebody rolling through a stop sign because they found two, two bad people in the back of the truck, and, uh, they could have lost their life that day. So these, these guys, along with the fire department, everybody else out there, I think stand, uh, need to stand in ovation because every day they stand up and protect us and all things you don't see or know about. They're here and they go home to their families, and, uh, their families love to go out, and we appreciate your service.
Y'all have a blessed evening.
All right, uh, as a reminder, Tuesday, September the fifth, which is a great day. My birthday, I guess I'll write your number. It's Rager, yeah, I find it back in the department. So I've got two birthdays, we said. Uh, Rager meeting of Darlington City Council, please say it's called a night. Do I have a message for adjourned for tonight?
I'll message for adjourned.
Say it, call in favor. Thank you, I'm Rager.